Good evening. Happy New Year to everyone. It's January 11, 2022. The time is 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I said we do have a quorum. We'll ask Councilman Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We stand on the edge of a new year after two of the most difficult years we've seen in decades. Two weeks to flatten the curve was turned into almost two years of the most trying times we could have imagined. We've experienced financial hardships, illnesses, loss of life, and a rise in mental health issues not seen in a very long time. And yet it's hard not to look at a brand-new year and think of all the possibilities that lie ahead. We continue to ask you, Father, to fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect citizens, businesses, the environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Remind us that all that we do as servants and stewards over the land and resources is for the pursuit of the truth, for the greater glory of you, and service to humanity. We can never discount the impact of hope for better times in the future, hope to put a pandemic behind us, hope that better jobs will come, and hope for a brighter tomorrow than yesterday. May God give us tenacity and stamina to go after the dreams he places in our minds. May God help us to be the kind of representatives that he needs in today's world. We ask of these things in your name, dear Father. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We move down to the approval of the agenda. There's a recommendation to move items 15A through 15F forward on our agenda. Also, a recommendation to defer action on item 10A. Recommendation to remove item 12A from the agenda. And also a recommendation to defer item 8B from the agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda with the notice changes?
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. We move down to the public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield, use, or allot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. At the end of your three-minute period, both will go off, and we ask that you conclude your statements at that particular time. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one speaker signed up tonight, and that is Mr. Donald Giliard. And as you said, he will have up to three minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. News of the Board. I came earlier today as we discuss the redistricting and the new lines that's being drawn. And I was disheartened when I really looked, had an opportunity to look at the lines. And I know redistricting is very difficult because I know the growth is toward the net in that area. But I thought it was important that we keep similar interest in mind as we drew the lines. And when I looked at the lines and I saw what was done to the African-American portion of the city of Georgetown that I think needs to stay together. I mean, I didn't understand the rationale behind it. One street is in District 4, the next street is in District 3. And I thought with similarities of interest in the city of Georgetown, particularly the uniqueness of the African-American community, that it would be important that you all kept us in the same district. And it's such an easy fix because all you have to do is come down for Agent Street, come around, and cut the lines. It's really easy. It really is. You talk about Butt Street, all of us went to the same schools together, all of us were in District 4 with Representative Lillie Jean Johnson all of our lives. I mean, if they're going to redo, you redoing the lines, at least keep similar interest in mind as you draw the lines. One of the map favors two heavily African-American districts. One of them has three African-American districts. I understand all of that, but at least allow the West End in particular to stay together. Have us in one district. Please, please look at that line again. And all of the other lines are cut very neatly. And then when you get to the African-American community within the city of Georgetown, Church Street where I live at is in one district, and then you go one more street and then another district. It's really an easy fix. The Dreamkeeper Precinct, the Beck Precinct, we're asking you all to help us keep similar interest in line, the same thing that you do for the walk-up on that area. Keep similar interest in mind. So please, please look at that map again and see if it could be done more fair for the African-American community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move down to the approval of minutes from our December 14, 2021 meeting. There are recommendations for adoption of those minutes. It's moved by Councilman Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. By virtue of the approval of the agenda, two matters included on the consent agenda have been approved, procurement number 21-064 and procurement number 21-065. We will move down to appointments to boards and commissions. We have an appointment to the library board by Councilman John Thomas.
Yes, sir. I move to reappoint Ms. Harriet Enzor to the library board.
You've heard the motion of Councilman John Thomas. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? A second by Councilperson Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Congratulations to Ms. Harriet Enzor. We'll go down to resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number 21-01. I'll finance the right to Ms. Langston.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. This is resolution number 22-01. It's requesting the use of $99,579 in American Rescue Plan Act of '22 funding to reimburse ourselves for emergency sick leave. In March of '21, the federal mandate requiring employers to give employees 80 hours of emergency sick leave when they tested positive for COVID was lifted, but the county opted to continue that policy on until December 31 of 2021. Since then, we've found out that we can use ARPA funds to reimburse ourselves for those expenses. So we're asking through this resolution that you approve using that $99,579 to reimburse ourselves. It will go $53,968 to General Fund, $2,246 to County Fire. Midway Fire will get $11,907, the OAS $969. Law Enforcement Fund will get $25,511, and Environmental Services $4,977. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we ask that you approve this resolution allowing us to use $99,579 of ARPA funds to reimburse ourselves for emergency sick leave.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Are there any questions for Ms. Langston?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Langston, was that the total amount we spent using the funds during the, up till a certain point?
That's what we spent on emergency sick leave, which was sick leave over in a hub or not what employees had accrued on the books. It was what we gave them from the period of April 1 until December 31.
December 31 of '21?
Of '21, yes.
Will, I take it, we're still incurring sick leave due to the virus?
We are, but we're now, it's now reduced from 80 hours of emergency sick leave that we give them to five hours or five days, so 40 hours of emergency sick leave. That's because of the CDC mandate saying that you don't have to be out for the 10 days like you did before.
So we're still given the sick leave, which is good. Will we be able to utilize the American Rescue Plan Act money for that also at a later date?
We can. We just, we need to do this right now because we need to report as of, on January 31st, we need to do our initial report to the state treasury on the money that we've spent. So this is, we need to do this to be able to, if we're going to do it, we need to do it now so that we can put that on the report.
Okay. Thank you.
You've heard the report from Ms. Langston. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve resolution number 21-01.
It's a motion by Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Let's go to item 15A, nonprofit spotlight. St. Christopher's Children, Executive Director.
Good evening and happy new year to everyone. My name is Frank McGuinness. I am the President of the Board of St. Christopher's Children, and I would like to thank you for being here today to tell you about what we are involved with here in Georgetown County. Our organization is 15 years old, and since that time, we have provided clothing and critical orthodontic care to over 4,000 needy children in Georgetown County. So at this point, I'd like to introduce our Executive Director, Kathy Bini, and she will describe more of the activities we are involved with.
Again, thank you for having us, council members, chairman, and audience. Since 2007, like he mentioned, we've been providing very disadvantaged, impoverished children with needy clothing and orthodontic care, some medical care as well. Our mission is actually, we're a nonprofit organization that provides for the immediate personal needs of abandoned, abused, and disadvantaged children. Next. So, so our vision and purpose, I think you, yeah, there we go. No, I'm sorry. You're good. So over $1,450,000 has been spent just in Georgetown County, which includes Georgetown, Holly's Island, all the areas that represent Georgetown County. We work with the 20 school nurses and administrators to identify children that have been left behind through no fault of their own. And COVID-19 has had a direct effect on how we reach these children. So we rely heavily on the administrators, and we've started to work with other nonprofits in the area to identify these children. And I know it sounds a little crazy to some of you, but these kids come to school with holes in their pants, clothing that doesn't fit, and kids are very mean, and they get ridiculed. So we try to promote self-esteem by just having, you know, new clothes, new smiles. Academic performance improves, school attendance improves, and when kids can smile and be happy with who they are, it's a win-win for everybody. So we're trying to enhance the quality of life for children in Georgetown County. So we spent $1,450,000. We've assisted over 4,000 children with clothing, and 275 people have had orthodontic care because in the state of South Carolina, Medicaid does not pay for this. So in 2021, we were able to distribute 175 winter coats to kids in need that needed coats. But in addition to that, we provided clothing for 241 children, basic needs, new clothing through the help of the schools and other nonprofit organizations. We also were able to help 25 children receive orthodontic care. The cost of orthodontics today can raise between $5,000 and $6,000. So some of our nonprofit partners that we have helped recently, Broadstep is a group home for boys that are there through no fault of their own. DSS has placed them there. We helped provide 26 boys right around Christmas time. We've assisted another five since the new year because when they arrive there, they arrive there with what's on their backs. And these kids do go to the public school, so they need to have the proper clothing to be able to attend school. We also recently helped the village group out of Plantersville. We clothed from head to toe 35 children in their summer academy with clothing in addition to winter coats. AMI Kids out in Georgetown, some of you are familiar with them. We've been helping them for years. We clothed 16 of their kids last December, and then we always are available to help Family Justice Center for kiddos that arrive there through no fault of their own. So in 30 days from the period of November 15 through December 15, we actually assisted 125 children. So that was more, that was half of what we did the entire year. And we know with the effects of COVID that we're going to continue to have to be able to, you know, offer that assistance. So some of our nonprofit community charitable foundations where we get our support, Frances Benel Foundation has been wonderful supporting clothing grants. International Paper, right here in Georgetown, has given us several thousand dollars a couple of years in a row for orthodontics. The
opposed. Congratulations to Ms. Harretton. We'll go down to resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number 21 dash 01. I'll finance the right to Ms. Langston.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. This is resolution number 22 dash 01. It's requesting the use of nine hundred or nine thousand nine ninety-nine thousand five hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars in American Rescue Plan Act of 22 funding to reimburse our selves for emergency sick leave. In March of 21, the federal mandate requiring employers to give employees 80 hours of emergency sick leave when they tested positive for COVID was lifted, but the county opted to continue that policy on until December 31st of 2021. Since then, we've found out that we can use ARPA funds to reimburse ourselves for those expenses. So we're asking through this resolution that you approve using that ninety-nine thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars to reimburse ourselves. It will go fifty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars to General Fund, two thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars to County Fire. Midway Fire will get eleven thousand nine hundred and seven dollars, the OAS nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Law Enforcement Fund will get twenty-five thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. And Environmental Services four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we ask that you approve this resolution allowing us to use ninety-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars of ARPA funds to reimburse ourselves for emergency sick leave.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Are there any questions for Ms. Langston?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Langston, was that the total amount we spent using the funds during the up till a certain point?
That's what we spent on emergency sick leave, which was sick leave over in a month or not what employees had accrued on the books. It was what we gave them from the period of April 1st until December 31st.
December 31st of 21?
Of 21.
Will, I take it, we're still incurring sick leave due to the virus?
We are, but we're now, it's now reduced from 80 hours to that of sick, emergency sick leave that we give them to five hour or five days. So 40 hours of emergency sick leave. That's because of the CDC mandate saying that you don't have to be out for the 10 days like you did before.
So we're still given the sick leave, which is good. Will we be able to utilize the American Rescue Plan Act money for that also at a later date?
We can. We just, we need to do this right now because we need to report as of on January 31st. We need to do our initial report to the state treasury on the money that we've spent. So this is, we need to do this to be able to, if we're going to do it, we need to do it now so that we can put that on the report.
Okay, thank you.
You have heard the report from Ms. Langston. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve resolution number 21 dash 01.
A motion by Councilman Newton is there, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Let's go to item 15A, nonprofit spotlight. St. Christopher's Children, Executive Director.
Good evening and happy new year to everyone. My name is Frank McInnis. I am the President of the Board of St. Christopher's Children. And I would like to thank you for having me here today to tell you about what we are involved with here in Georgetown County. Our organization is 15 years old, and since that time, we have provided clothing and critical orthodontic care to over 4,000 needy children in Georgetown County. So at this point, I'd like to introduce our Executive Director, Kathy Bini, and she will describe more of the activities we are involved with.
Again, thank you for having us, council members, chairman, and audience. Since 2007, like he mentioned, we've been providing very disadvantaged impoverished children with needy clothing and orthodontic care, some medical care as well. Our mission is actually, we're a nonprofit organization that provides for the immediate personal needs of abandoned, abused, and disadvantaged children. So, so our vision and purpose, I think you. No, I'm sorry, you're good. So over a million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been spent just in Georgetown County, which includes Georgetown, Polley's Island, all the areas that represent Georgetown County. We work with the 20 school nurses and administrators to identify children that have been left behind through no fault of their own. And COVID-19 has had a direct effect on how we reach these children. So we rely heavily on the administrators, and we've started to work with other nonprofits in the area to identify these children. And I know it sounds a little crazy to some of you, but these kids come to school with holes in their pants, clothing that doesn't fit, and kids are very mean and they get ridiculed. So we try to promote self-esteem by just having, you know, new clothes, new smiles. Academic performance improves, school attendance improves. And when kids can smile and be happy with who they are, it's a win-win for everybody. So we're trying to enhance the quality of life for children in Georgetown County. So we spent a million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've assisted over 4,000 children with clothing and 275 people have had orthodontic care because in the state of South Carolina, Medicaid does not pay for this. So in 2021, we were able to distribute 175 winter coats to kids in need that needed coats. But in addition to that, we provided clothing for 241 children, basic needs, new clothing, through the help of the schools and other nonprofit organizations. We also were able to help 25 children receive orthodontic care. The cost of orthodontics today can raise between $5,000 and $6,000. So some of our nonprofit partners that we have helped recently, Broadstep is a group home for boys that are there through no fault of their own. DSS has placed them there. We helped provide 26 boys right around Christmas time. We've assisted another five since the New Year because when they arrive there, they arrive there with what's on their backs. And these kids do go to the public schools, so they need to have the proper clothing to be able to attend school. We also recently helped the village group out of Plantersville. We clothed from head to toe 35 children in their summer academy with, with clothing in addition to winter coats. AMI Kids out in Georgetown, some of you are familiar with them. We've been helping them for years. We clothed 16 of their kids last, last December. And then we always are available to help Family Justice Center for kiddos that arrive there through no fault of their own. So in 30 days from the period of November 15th through December 15th, we actually assisted 125 children. So that was more, that was half of what we did the entire year. And we know with the effects of COVID that we're going to continue to have to be able to, you know, offer that assistance. So some of our nonprofit community charitable foundations where we get our support, Frances Benel Foundation has been wonderful supporting clothing grants. International Paper, right here in Georgetown, has given us several thousand dollars a couple of years in a row for orthodontics. The Yaki Foundation has recently given us $2,000 for orthodontics. We have some private charitable funds, and then the Wakama Community Foundation assisted us during COVID. So all the money spent stays right here to help the kids in Georgetown County. And we do, we couldn't do any of our work without some of our church partners. You can see them listed. Georgetown Presbyterian has been wonderful. They support, they support the things that we do. The funds that they give us are not limited to just clothing or just orthodontics. It's unrestricted, so we can use it as the children need things. Palmetto Giving Day, they support that as well, which is coming up in May. So our 2022 goal is to assist at least 300 impoverished children with new clothing and basic needs, personal hygiene items such as shampoo, toothpaste, all of that. And then to be able to assist 25 more new kids with orthodontic care. We currently have 15 kids on our list. Two of them are critical. We have a waiting list, and we try to do two kids a month for orthodontics when the funding's available. And then we want to go ahead and do 200 new winter coats to children again in need for this coming year. We also have a resale store in Polley's Island that supports our mission. We accept donations from the community of adult, adult clothing, household items. And we also take that money, then the proceeds, and put that right back in the community to help the kids. So if you've ever been down that way, we accept donations Tuesday through Saturday, 10 to 4:00. And it's a big deal for helping our mission. So again, we thank you for having us. Our two programs are Critical Care Orthodontics, Basic Needs, New Clothing. And for more information, you're welcome to go online. And we just appreciate the Georgetown County community. Thank you for having us.
Enough presentation for fiscal year 21 and you comprehensive financial report.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, County Council. Before I introduce the outside auditors, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Georgetown County's team finance. Unfortunately, we only have one member here tonight, but there are eight people on staff in finance. They worked, they were very dedicated staff. They worked diligently for the last several months to put this audit together. And I'm just really proud of them, and I think you should be too. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Langston. He's with Thompson, Frank, Scott, Adams and Company, PA, who is our outside auditors who will present our fiscal year 21 audit findings.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. This is going to be short and sweet. We're going to go with Harris and her staff. I'll have to be complimented because it's a very good audit. I mean, it was very, very thorough, and they've done a bang-up job. So I thank you for that. There's, you have a black binder that's got a presentation summary. That's, that's key items that's in the full audit report. But we're going to use the presentation summary because it would take us a long time to go through a full audit before. So I would imagine you would rather do the presentation summary rather than have a long, drawn-out presentation. If you look at pages one, one through three is a letter. It's a required correspondence to governance. We're just required to tell you these things. Basically, they have categories in this letter, and if there was any issues, we would be telling you about it. The good news is everything was good. Your, your accounting practices were proper. We didn't have any significant difficulties dealing with the management, none that I know of. There was, you know, any corrections that had, was, was needed has been made. And no disagreements with the management that we know of, no second opinions from other CPAs that I'm aware of. And the main thing is there was no audit findings or issues. So it is a good, clean audit. Very good, very complimentary. So with that, on pages four and five, you're going to see a lot of numbers and data. I'm not going to read all those numbers and data, but there are key items, and it's a five-year trend so that you can see, you know, comparisons from year to year over those five years. And also, these, these numbers on pages four and five are the background for the charts that starts on page six. So if we go to page six of your presentation summary, the top chart represents an analysis of your fund balance. The blue bars represent your total fund balance, and the red bars representing the unavailable fund balance. And you can see there in 2021, your total fund balance was about 14.6 million dollars as compared to 2017 of about 11.8 million dollars. And the unavailable fund balance for 2021 was about 1.6 million compared to 2017 with 1.4 million. Chart at the bottom of the page is an analysis of fund balance available. And you can see the percentages through those five years there, and that percentage has grown quite a bit in 2021. So that's good. On page seven, the chart at the top is a chart of your cash balances by different categories, funds. So, and you can see the total dollars at the bottom for each one of those. You can see that the, the cash balances, the largest category is the Capital Improvement Plan projects, followed by other governmental funds, and then thirdly, the general fund, and then the smaller ones follow, follow in after that. With your fund balances, it's very similar. You can see that your, your, your largest category of the general fund balance is the other governmental funds, followed by the, the Capital Improvement Plan projects, and then third, the general fund. On page eight, chart at the top represents your tax collection percentages, and you can see how your, how your percentages have, have varied between 2017 and 2021. You can see it's 97.05% 2021. It was really good in 2017, it was 99.97%. Chart at the bottom is an analysis of your debt based on what types between governmental and business. And you can see that the governmental is 95% of your debt, and the other 5% is in your business-type debt. Page nine, we break down the general fund revenues by categories. And we can see there that your largest category is your, I believe it's your property taxes, followed by your fees and licenses and permits. And we similarly, on page nine, we, at the bottom, we have a general fund breakdown of expenditures by categories. And you can see that, see that your governmental, general government is your largest expenditures, followed by, I think, the debt service, no, excuse me, culture and recreation, and then public safety. Those are some of the key items on it. I'd be glad to take some questions. That's basically all we have. I said it was going to be short and sweet. There's lots of information in the audit report. Harris has done a great job. There's a lot of, a lot of information that's in the notes that, that gives you some details of things and a lot of, a lot of. As I say, I'll entertain any questions if you have any. If I know the answer, I'll tell you. If I, if I don't know the answer, I'll tell you, but we'll get you an answer.
Yeah, the question concerning the collection percentages, the reduction for 2021. What would you say that's attributed to? And what do you see as the trend say for 2022? Do you have a drop-off in 2021?
I know that, that in lots of our audits, you know, with the economy as it is and the COVID stuff, a lot of people weren't paying as well, but I'll defer to Harris. Heard y'all specifically.
The only other thing that I would bring to your attention is that that was a reassessment year, and generally reassessment does reflect a reduction in tax revenues coming in.
Are there any other?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. On the page nine, the debt service, is that debt service, does, does that include the outstanding bonds we have? Is that what that is? Is, next question, the point 1.3%, is that in line? Is there a rule of thumb we, we try to beat with, with the debt service? Is that in line? Is that high? Is that low? That's our fault.
It's listed in the back of the actual audit document in the statistical section. I think it's like 16 million is, you know, what we can.
Our max.
Yeah, that's our max. That's where we're at right now.
Yeah, there it is. Thank you, Harris.
I have a question regarding page eight, governmental debt versus business-type debt. I'm not sure what we're comparing there. County government, I presume, is governmental debt. What is, what is business debt?
That would be your proprietary bonds.
Can you elaborate further?
The environment service funds and stormwater. So that's only the debt associated with the capital replacement plan, those capital leases that we have. That's the only part that's in the business portion. The rest of it is all bonds and then the debt service that's associated with the CERP for governmental funds. So that's why most of it is showing up in governmental funds because debt service is considered a governmental fund as opposed to proprietary bond.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We got, we go down to the employee of the quarter recognition. Ms. Brooke H. Harris.
Sorry, council members, in Mr. Ackerman's absence, it is truly a pleasure to recognize Judy Blankenship as our employee of the quarter for the last quarter of 2021. Judy, if you want to come stand up here while we brag on you. Judy is actually, in the history of the Employee of the Quarter program, she is one of only two people to have ever received this award twice. The last time was a number of years ago. She has been with us for 13 years. She started with us in 2008 as a planner level two and has really just stood out over the years. She's made herself invaluable. Judy's job entails reviewing and approving subdivisions and plaits for compliance with county requirements and coordinating with other county departments. She does lots of work that goes before the planning commission, and then, of course, makes it to you eventually, all the complicated, detailed reports that you guys have to, to look over. You have Judy to thank for that. She, she goes through all the, the hard stuff and makes them, if it's, if you can believe it, much more easy to digest by the time they get to you. Judy is known for her well-established working relationship with surveyors and engineers. She shows tremendous patience dealing with everybody from fellow staff to members of the public to, you know, anybody who comes into the planning department and has developed a reputation through these attributes where people will actually come in and they seek her out because they know that she will get things done, and she'll be a pleasure to deal with while, while she's getting them done. She is known for going above and beyond in the planning department. She is considered a true expert and the go-to person for a variety of tasks. Since her promotion, she was promoted in the last year for her excellent work. Since her promotion in the past year, she has taken on the additional tasks of scheduling, coordinating, running county-wide plan review meetings, reviewing new plan developments and flexible design districts, training new employees, assisting with permitting software upgrades. And she has done all of this without giving up any of the previous things that she was already doing. I will also mention that for a good part of the quarter that she is receiving this award for, she was one of only two people in the planning department. You may remember that we had some turnover there, and it was just her and Holly for a good portion of that quarter. So to have continued to, to get all of her things done and filled in, I think that she really shone and proved that she is deserving of this award. She is consistently willing to undertake any task, big or small, according to, to her planning director, to accomplish the goals of the department and keep everything running smoothly. And she does not only do it on time, she often completes it early because she says, you never know what might happen at the last minute. So she is always prepared, and Holly is very clearly the kind of employee that, that we value and want to keep here at Georgetown County. She's also part of the morale committee, so she helps us hopefully keep other employees happy and retain them. So with that, I would like to present to you Judy Blankenship as the employee of the quarter. And we have a plaque that, Mr. Chairman, if you would come up for a photo op with Judy, we would like to present.
Congratulations again, Ms. Blankenship. 2021 Volunteer of the Year, Dallas.
Chairman Morant, members of council, good evening. I'm here this evening to, also in lieu of Mr. Ackerman's attendance, to present to you the Volunteer of the Year Award. This year's Volunteer of the Year is Mr. Alan Welch. Mr. Welch is a dedicated volunteer at Midway Fire Rescue, and he has been with the department in a volunteer capacity for the past six years. Mr. Welch contributes to the success of the department through a wide array of different opportunities that become available. Outside of, you know, firefighting, he is in a support staff role. And he uses his past experiences, not only in his, or I'm sorry, not only his experiences in his current job set, which brings a logistical skill set, but also his past experiences as a United States Navy veteran to the table and, and, you know, supplements our department very well. Through his experience with. Through his experience with large vehicles, heavy equipment, Mr. Welch assists with maneuvering departmental vehicles for crucial repair, service, and other necessary maintenance items. This allows our response personnel to remain on duty on shift and at the ready, so he helps out in that regard. He is also very instrumental in supporting the response of the firefighter rehabilitation unit, which is a unit that we have at Midway. We have large scenes that's able to come out and support keeping our folks hydrated, cool. If it's summertime, it keeps them cool. If it's much cooler like it is out there tonight, we keep them warm in that regard. In addition to that, he also is very diligent in our fire hydrant maintenance program, ensuring that our fire hydrants are in proper working order and that we have things cleared around those, there's no obstructions, and they're ready for use anytime we need them. He also supports, like many other folks, during our major disaster situations, hurricanes and the like, and he's labeled as a consistently consistent volunteer by his peers. Due to his real-world job, Mr. Welch was not able to be here tonight, but his lovely wife, who's probably the next best thing and also works at Midway Fire Rescue, is here and she will be accepting his award on his behalf. So I think we have a plaque for him, and I'll invite Ms. Jose and Interim Chief Crawford up for the photo as well.
Congratulations again. Hey, Ms. Ellis, we'll talk about the employee volunteer of the year.
I'm gonna make myself comfortable, not too comfortable. This evening, I'm here to present the employee volunteer of the year. Typically, this is an employee who goes above and beyond in a volunteer capacity. Day to day, this employee does not work for our division in emergency services, but he is there at our beck and call anytime we need him, and he is also a volunteer in the emergency services division. Many of you are all too familiar with the household name of Mr. Harold West. Harold is a public services employee on a daily basis. He works with Ray Funny and his outfit day to day, but when he's not at work doing official Georgetown County public services capacity, Harold is out there in the Ohana community keeping everyone safe. Harold represents one of our substations, Station 17, in the Ohana community, and quite frankly, I think he's the backbone and the pillar of that station and keeps it up and running, operational, day in and day out. He has a reputation of always being there whenever he's needed. For example, I called him last Thursday. We had a need and he fulfilled that need without question. We appreciate his dedication, and although we, you know, his official capacity is with public services, like I said, when he's not working there, he's always at the fire station. He's either driving the truck, pulling out the volunteers and making sure that they're trained to the standards that they need to be trained to, that operate under him at his station, or responding to calls. Anytime I hear his station get dispatched out to a call, I usually hear that all too familiar voice on the other end of the radio, which is quite comforting. He leads an example day in and day out at his service at Georgetown County, doesn't stop at the end of the workday. He is definitely a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week employee, and we thank him for that. Therefore, we would like to recognize him as Georgetown County's Employee Volunteer of the Year, Mr. Harold West. Jackie just gave me a fun fact. He is the only other person to win the Employee of the Quarter recognition twice, and he was recognized back in October as Employee of the Quarter. So we're in an esteemed crowd this evening.
Okay, congratulations again, Mr. West. Okay, Ms. Ellis, we go into the 2021 Manager of the Year Award.
All right, this is the last one, I promise, and you'll be tired of my smiling face, but thank you. This evening, I am honored, quite honored, to present to you the 2021 Manager of the Year Award. Battalion Chief Jeff Pfeifer from Midway Fire Rescue is our Manager of the Year. Battalion Chief Pfeifer, he brings 15 years of experience and dedication to Midway Fire Rescue and Georgetown County through his employment. He began as a firefighter paramedic and worked his way all the way up through the ranks, serving every position between firefighter, paramedic, and battalion chief position. He is not only dedicated to sea shift, which he runs every third day, and manages the firefighters that operate on that shift and the ones that are, you know, helping out whenever there's vacancies, but in addition to his day-to-day operational duties every third day, Chief Pfeifer also manages a wide variety of other programs, initiatives, and just downright tasks, I think, that fall on him as the guy who can always get it done. He takes care of our health and wellness program at Midway, ensures that our guys are as physically fit as possible. He maintains the department's policy and procedure manual, makes sure that things are in line there, assists with hose testing, fire extinguisher inventory program, and has a wide variety of other duties that he takes care of on a daily basis. Most notably, he is probably the forefront of our recruitment retention program, and he physically talks to every single employee that we hire and persuades them basically to come and be a part of our team. He has the charisma and the character to do so day in and day out. He is a valuable asset to our department, and we couldn't be more thrilled to have such a wonderful leader and manager receiving this award this year. Not only is he a wonderful firefighter and battalion chief, friend, husband, and a father, so we are honored to have him here this evening and present to you the 2021 Manager of the Year.
Congratulations again to all of you, and thanks for all you do for Georgetown County. We move on down to item 90, Resolution Number 22-02, Attorney Watson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, resolution is for the sale of a piece of property out at the Business Park. It is, the sale agreement has been amended. The amendment involves purchase price, closing date, and then also giving the county a little more discretion in it should it not meet the closing date.
Any questions for Attorney Watson? Hearing a motion for approval of the amended resolution number 21-02?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Any motion by Mr. Newton is there, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We go down to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 21-39. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council. I will go over 10B and 10C together. This is a request from Mr. Zach Smith to rezone two parcels totaling approximately 10 acres from general commercial to forest agriculture. These parcels are located at 92 Fire Station Street and 11397 Pleasant Hill Drive outside of Georgetown. There have not been any changes since we last reviewed this at second reading. The owner, as a reminder, does propose to downsize on the property from commercial to agricultural in order to use the property for farm services purposes. These parcels do meet our minimum lot area requirement for FA, and FA is supported by the surrounding uses. The land and commission held a public hearing on this issue back in October. No one but the applicant came forward to speak, and the PC did recommend approval of the rezoning with a vote of seven to zero. They also recommended approval for a change to the future land use map from commercial to low-density residential. I'll be glad to answer any questions for items 10B or 10C.
Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance number 21-39 or ordinance number 21-40? Okay. Okay. Thanks, Ms. Richardson. We'll go ahead and take ordinance number 21-39 first. Is there a motion for, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 21-39?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve ordinance 21-39.
Motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goddard. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. We go down to ordinance number 21-40. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 21-40.
A motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to second reading of ordinances. Attorney Watson.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 21-37.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one's on for second reading. It will require a motion so that it can incorporate the proposed text. Prior one was just for first reading by title only. This is a fee-in-lie agreement that would bring some capital investments and jobs.
Is there a motion for, well, first, are there any questions for Attorney Watson? Okay. Is there a motion for second reading approval? Of ordinance number 21-37. You got a motion by Mr. Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Newton. Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the text?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
We have first voted on the amendment. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries for the amendment. Now, we go back to the main motion. All in favor of the main motion that's amended? Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to second reading of ordinance number 21-41. Attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. This is, again, for a fee-in-lie of tax agreement. This is a second amendment, a second amendment, excuse me, to an existing fee-in-lie agreement that was passed by the county in 2019. The purpose of the amendment is simply to extend the time for the spec building to come out of the ground. This was in 2019, and there were delays in the construction, probably due to a number of reasons for that. So the amendment would allow them to continue on beyond what was the original date for construction. And it will require a motion to amend to incorporate the proposed text.
Are there any questions for Attorney Watson regarding ordinance number 21-41? Hearing a motion for second reading approval of ordinance number 21-41?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the amended as written.
Okay. You have a motion by Mr. Newton for second reading approval of ordinance number 21-41, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Is there a motion to amend ordinance number 21-41 to incorporate the text?
So move.
Move by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. We'll go ahead and vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Now we go back to the main motion. All in favor of the motion? Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We go down to ordinance number 21-42. Madam Administrator.
Good evening. Before you is the ordinance for redistricting. As I mentioned earlier, as part of your motion, you do need to designate map 843A as a part of this ordinance.
Any questions or comments for Madam Administrator? Is there a motion for second reading approval of ordinance number 21-42?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 21-42 with specific reference to map 843A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolina. Is there a motion to incorporate the text, which would include map number 843A?
Chairman, I vote that we amend the previous motion of ordinance number 21-42 to include the text changes and, again, with specific reference to 843A.
Is there a second on the, second by Ms. Johnson? Is there, are there any discussions? We first voted on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Oppose? Okay, amendment carries. We go back and vote on the main motion, all in favor of the main motion with the incorporated text incorporating map 843A. Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to first reading of ordinances. It'll be read into the record by title only. First, I have ordinance number 21, I'm sorry, ordinance number 22-02, an amendment to Article 10, Article 11, parking and Article 12 buffers of the zoning ordinance relating to parking lot landscaping and buffers between land uses. Ordinance number 22-03, an ordinance to amend the plantation federal plan development, a portion of TMS number 04-0155-001-01-11 to add self-storage to the list of uses. Ordinance number 22-04, an amendment of the comprehensive plan, future land use map to designate a parcel of property identified as TMS number 03-1006-017-03-00 and located at 8990 North Frasier Street, Georgetown County, from low-density residential to commercial. Ordinance number 22-05, three-zone-one parcel, 2.31 acres, located at 8990 North Frasier Street in Georgetown, identified as TMS number 03-1006-017-03-00 from general commercial and forest agricultural residential to general commercial. We go down to item 15G, S.C. Department of Public Safety grant award, Ms. Ellis.
Good evening, Councilman Morant and all of you, Council. The Georgetown County Sheriff's Office has received a grant for $623,527, which will fund six new school resource officers in local schools. in local schools. We received the notification of the grant on New Year's Eve, and we're very excited to share the news with you. The School Resource Officer Program is authorized by the South Carolina Appropriations Act and managed at the state level by the South Carolina Department of Public Safety. It directly funds local law enforcement agencies to pay for full-time school resource officers. There is no local match requirement for this grant. Our grant will allow us to hire deputies to serve as school resource officers at Kensington Elementary, Waukama Elementary, McDonald Elementary, Waukama Intermediate, Plantersville Elementary, and Coastal Montessori Charter School. The grant pays for the salaries and benefits of the six new officers, as well as their vehicles, equipment, training, and travel. Sheriff Weaver wants to be clear that this grant does not replace our agency's immediate need for eight additional officers to patrol our roads and protect our citizens. It does, however, allow us to partner with the school district to ensure the safety of our county's children. This grant has been run for six months and is part of a statewide endeavor to formalize the provision of school resource officers at schools throughout South Carolina. We have already been invited to apply for next year's funding. I should also mention that everyone we hire through this grant is a prize. This is a grant position, and the county assumes no responsibility to continue their employment should the grant not be renewed, but it will be. Thank you for your time. We are very much hoping you will greenlight our acceptance of the grant, and I'd love to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Fallow, and thank you for bringing me to Georgetown. Are there any questions for Ms. Fallow? Comments? Okay, here, no seen, nothing. Thank you. Is there a motion for... Is there a motion regarding SC Department of Public Safety grant award?
Mr. Chairman, I move for acceptance.
A motion by Councilperson Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks again, Ms. Fallow. Thank you, Chair. We'll go down to Ms. Mulligan concerning Department of Public Services Lit Action Program.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for inviting us tonight. I'm here tonight to present to you our program that we've been working on for several years now, the litter and illegal dumping presentation. As you... as you have been seeing around our county, and may have been noticing a rise in... in litter in our beautiful community, maybe you've been wondering how and if we can halt or prevent this from happening in the future. Well, for the past couple of years, we've put some of our best minds on this project, and tonight we have a presentation for your consideration. We have with us tonight our Environmental Services Division Manager, Ms. Michelle LaRocco, along with her environmentalist who is here tonight as well. Both of these employees have been working diligently on putting together the research necessary to provide council some direction and guidance on how best to deal with our trash, our pandemic trash. We have two capable persons who've been working behind the scenes, putting together the program and doing the research, and I'd like to really try and just mention tonight that Ms. Mulligan, she is the author of a book here locally. It's called Flowering Plans of Hobbit Carbarony. We encourage you to get a copy of it as well. She's a very prolific writer, and she's a very enthusiastic employee that we are very ecstatic to have on a miss. Tonight, as we go forward, I'd like to present to you a very important project in Georgetown County, and we think that both of these persons need to be here tonight to present it to you, to give you the full depth and the breadth of the importance of us working together as a community to solve our problem for many, many, many reasons. Thank you. First, we have Ms.
Good morning. After... Good evening, councilors. Thank you very much for having us. Next slide. So, the problem of litter and illegal dumping is not unique to Georgetown County, but we definitely see it here at home. Litter throughout the country can cause up to $1.3 billion of cost to local governments and local state municipal governments. And the presence of litter and illegal dump sites negatively affects your local community through the loss of... or the reduction of property values judged by the National Association of Home Builders. The likelihood of businesses to locate into a community is reduced when litter volumes are high. And additionally, return visitors are reduced from tourist traffic when litter popular... or litter volumes are high. And unfortunately, most litter comes from intentional acts of dropping, throwing trash or litter out of passing... out of cars. It is vehicle sourced, and therefore it ends up on roadways and in parking areas and in transitional zones between parking areas and buildings. And then litter also comes from unsecured loads and material coming out of vehicles as they transit through our roadways. So, that's a little bit about where it comes from, and so we have some strategies that we'd like to present to you as options for moving forward in abating this problem to our community. So, our vision in Georgetown is to have a county free of litter and illegal dump sites, and through making a positive long-term change in behaviors and attitudes around litter and littering, and minimizing those instances throughout the county. And so, over the past year, we did the first in a very long time, a litter index survey. Basically, that was a roadside accounting of occurrences of litter throughout our county. We made a random selection of locations, and we surveyed them. We did this through the use of interns in the Environmental Services Division, and we scored the roadways, county roadways, on a score of very low litter or nonexistent litter to high or locations of actual dump sites. And these are the results from... this is a snapshot in time from last year, and we plan and will tell you about our future plans to continue this, to, you know, use this survey and this litter index as a way to drive action in areas, and then hopefully also show a record of success as we go through... as we proceed with our projects. We will add also that we have... Environmental Services was the recipient of an ATAX accommodations tax grant last term, and we, using that funding, we were able to support over... or 10 volunteer litter cleanup events with over 250 volunteers, and the tonnage collected was 15,000 pounds of litter removed with a very limited investment of funding. We funded supplies and resources, but not the hours for the volunteers, which, if we had paid those volunteers, could have gone up to $100,000 worth of paid time. So, in kind, we received massive return on that small amount of funding. But our plan for the future is a two-pronged approach, and that is of education and changing those perceptions, and then also the action of getting the litter up and getting people to see and take a stock of their community and their areas that they care about, and to try and make... get people to engage in their communities. There's a lot of resources out there from organizations that already provide great information, DHEC, Take Action, SC, Palmetto Pride, and they have curriculum and educational information. But we also want to get litter crews on the roads safely to target those areas, but... and also to engage those communities on a regular basis. We do have some barriers, and I think there always... there always are barriers, and funding is always a barrier. We have some grant funding currently, and we'll discuss what our current funding strategy is at the moment and see where that goes. And then coordination and communication. Litter, unfortunately, one of the reasons why it generates so frequently is because it's always somebody else's problem, or it's no one's specific job, and it builds up, and it's something people do when they can find the time to deal with it, if they can find the time to deal with it. So, coordinating and communication between all of these groups that are doing a little bit, we want to make sure we're spreading our impact in areas that... and we're not duplicating effort in one place and missing somewhere else. And then I bring up safety, because if we ultimately work with a volunteer basis, we could... we can solve safety with funding and with coordination and with both, but it is something that we have to consider from the beginning of any project, because we're talking about litter along roadways, and we certainly want to make sure it's a shared and primary concern for all of those involved. And so, this... these are summary of our five action items, and I'm going to let my colleague, Ms. Maureen Mulligan, review a little bit more in detail of the specific action items as we conclude this.
Thank you for hearing our presentation on this. Our first action item is going to be to continue the litter index, and we're going to try to do that annually. Could you go back? Well, no, I guess you can just go. So, we'll speed through it. Yeah, the first one is litter index, and we need to have this base data so that we can tell if we're doing a good job and where we're doing good, where we're not doing so well. If you see the heat map that's up there, the blue is... were the lower values where there wasn't so much trash, and then where you go up to white, red hot and white, those were the high litter areas. And so, you can see that it's... that they... it gets more concentrated in the populated areas. We are going to maintain records of the areas that we clean so that we can see how they line up, the litter index and our success with cleaning. The action item number two is coordination, and one of the things that we have worked into our budget is to try to have a luncheon, where we're going to try to get all of these agencies together, and we're going to try to make sure that people aren't duplicating, and we're going to make a registry of sorts so that we can coordinate our efforts and get the biggest bang for our buck. So, we don't want to be repeating services that other people are providing, and we want to make sure that we can do as much as we can with the limited funds that we have. Okay, and number three, we're going to have a visible reminders, and how we're going to do this is we're going to do a competition in the schools, having kids design a please-don't-litter, anti-litter signs, and they're going to be permanent signs that we'll put along the roadside, and we have that budgeted in as well. Number four, we're going to focus on volunteer recruitment, and as a part of this one, we're going to try to incorporate volunteers as ambassadors. We have prepared a presentation that anyone, county council people could give at town halls or whatever, just to raise awareness and let people know what resources are available to them if they would like to organize cleanup, what we can do to help them accomplish that, and provide them with the necessary resources and contacts to be successful. And then we're going to make... try to have some sort of follow-up with these volunteers where we acknowledge their participation and promote that they are doing this on their own. And action item number five is elementary school outreach. We are planning on... we have funding that we just found out we got the grant from Palmetto Pride, where we can now have a part-time litter crew of three individuals. One of the supervisor or the team leader of this... of this crew is going to have one part of a day, well, the whole day, where part of their work is going to be reaching out to the schools. We have to kind of try to get these kids when they're young, because once... if you can get the kids, the kids are going to give it to their parents and tell, you know, "Mom, why are you throwing that out the car?" Then hopefully it'll reduce the amount of litter. If we can increase the awareness of the kids, we can hopefully have an impact on the amount of litter that's out there. So, and then we're also going to hold a seminar for teachers in the county to make sure that they're aware of the various resources that Palmetto Pride and DHEC have with curriculum, because they follow the standards for the school district, and there's already a curriculum there that if we can just get them to work it into their programs, that would be a benefit for us. Okay, and then this slide is just showing the proposed budget that we worked out. The top part shows the funds that we have, and as you can see, it's mostly... well, it's all grant. Well, I think there's a small part that's not grant, but the majority of it is grant dollars. So, we cannot depend on this, you know, forever, but it's a great start, and we're excited to bring these... this part-time litter crew on so that we can focus especially in areas where it's more dangerous for unpaid people, you know, for volunteers to go. We can have these folks go to those areas. They'll be specially trained in safety. They'll have a vehicle with warning lights and things like that. And we're just excited to get it started and see where we can go with that. We are... we actually, with the ATAX grant, we tried to hire someone all last year. So, as part of this new budget, we've increased the salary, hoping that we'll get more interest for the team leader. We increased it to $15 an hour, and then the cleanup assistants, we are offering $12 an hour. From the people that I've interviewed and spoken with, there's a negative connotation to picking up trash. And so, that's another thing that we need to kind of try to help people realize that there's no shame in picking up trash along the side of the road. It's actually kind of invigorating. You feel great when you're done. So... Oh, and then the timetable. So, we put this report together at the end of last year, and we're hoping that by... we're hoping we'll get somebody hired by the end of February at the latest so that we can start... start the cleanup process. And we're also going to participate in the Great American Cleanup. That's with Palmetto Pride and Keep America Beautiful. The big grant that we... biggest part of our grant money is from Palmetto Pride. We got a litter crew, $25,000 grant, and we just found out about that this week that we got that grant. So, that's exciting news, and we're also going to participate in November with America Recycle Day. So, we're going to try to do more community events and raise awareness of the issues.
So, in conclusion, you know, we thank you very much for considering the issue of litter in Georgetown County, and we just want to reiterate the fact that while it is always... litter can be always somebody else's problem, we need to look at how do we fund dealing with the problem. And we're very glad to... that we're able to successfully get grant funding, but if we need to consider the long-term implications of continually finding grant funding or looking for alternatives. And if you would like to be a county litter ambassador, we would certainly... we thank you for all of your work you've already done. And if you go... if you want to work with your communities and constituents, we can help you with either a presentation or the support at a community event, and then get you supplies and safety gear and signs for a litter pickup. Or if you know people who would be great ambassadors themselves, those key members of the community who can bring people together... of the community who can bring people together to have a consistent litter crew, we need to know who those people are, and if they're already engaged, we want to promote the good work that they're already doing, because we know there are litter pickups out there that we are not accounting for. And we hope we can all collectively get involved in this litter prevention effort. And if you have any questions, please feel free to contact myself, Ms. Mulligan, and Environmental Services, or anyone in public services can point you towards us, and we'll be happy to take your questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Good to see Michelle and Maureen. I have both of them on speed dial. The... this is good. I appreciate you all doing this. The litter map that was up, will that be given to the newspaper guys?
Yes, yes, we can provide that.
I would really like the parts of the county that are highlighted, which means that's the trashiest area. I would like the public to really see the ones that live in the trashiest areas in the county. And the other thing, putting this program together, it's a long time coming. Thank you for your effort for doing this. One of my beliefs that will slow litter down, because I've picked enough of it up on the side of the road, and I challenge my fellow council members to get out there and organize and have some cleanup days. It's only two... you can do it on a Saturday morning, in two hours, you'll be done. And you'll feel real good about yourself, but you'll be amazed at how many bags of trash you have picked up. And they will... they will pick it up. Maureen will have it scheduled to picked up, and they'll weigh it, and they'll tell you how much you picked up. And the largest one I think I've been involved with, we picked up 3,000 pounds one Saturday morning, and it wasn't on a very long stretch of road. What was so sad about it? But the... have we addressed with the county sheriff's department on these fines? Do we know how much we have collected in fines? How many they have charged?
We don't... I don't know that. We don't know that information currently. Though, I do know last year or in the course of recent time, the sheriff's Facebook page, for example, promoted a time when they caught someone via game cameras illegally dumping on a roadside. So, they do that, and there is their... they have their officer who we partner with and we communicate with frequently. Enforcement is certainly a different part of the strategy that's key, and so I think promoting those sorts of things is also important.
Yeah, very much so.
The plan is that we'd like to start publicizing the number of tickets that are written and where the concentration of those tickets are, just so that, like you were saying about the heat map, we can let people know where the problem areas are.
I'm convinced that just... it's anecdotal, but I see uncovered trucks. I see litter flying out of trucks all the time, pickup trucks, dump trucks, garbage trucks, you know, 18-wheelers, stuff just flying out. So, any thoughts about how to better control that as time goes on?
Yes, sir. We have a good relationship with the sheriff's department, and he has one person in particular, his job is to monitor those kinds of vehicles that are traveling along our roadways. In fact, he has, in fact, give some of our drivers for collecting trucks tickets as well. So, he's out there monitoring the highways, particularly Highway 51 where all the trash comes that's being collected. So, I know he's out there, and he's giving out citations as well.
It may be onerous, but, you know, tarps might consider that as we go forward, perhaps in ordinance or...
So, the litter patrol officer has had and has requested... or is planning to also do TARP days where he does give out tarps, some at our recycle centers and some at our landfill, to the smaller load trucks, because some... like the large trucks often have them pre-installed. But the... he has given out tarps and had done tarping days to let people know, "Here's your warning, but here's your tarp. Don't let me see this again." And he has had success with some of those programs. That's part of the unsecured load. I believe that's state law on that.
TARP programs, but again, it's a limited... you can't apply for it all the time. You can only apply for it certain...
Right, right. Thank you.
If there's a part of the community who desires to have a cleanup day, they can just contact your department and get some materials to do it with. And also, is there a coordinated cleanup day per se that we can announce a cleanup county-wide?
Not yet, but we hope to very soon.
That's part of your plan. Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you all. Okay, you've heard the presentation regarding Department of Public Services Litter Action Plan. Is there a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion by Mr. Newton for acceptance of the plan. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Guggins and Mr. Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you again for the plan. Is there any further business coming before council?
We do need to announce the public information dates for the redistricting for the public on January 18th at Chappie Recreational Center, January 19th at Howard, and also January 24th at the Waukama Recreation Center. The public is welcome to attend these sessions to get more information and also to give their input. Thank you.
And what time?
6:00 P.M.
Thank you. Any other business before council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Guggins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Standing adjourned. Thank you all for attending.